Love staying informed? Subscribe now and get unlimited access to local news, weather, and sports for just 99 cents a month for your first three months at inform.news/join. Read every story, listen to every podcast, and download the apps that keep you informed and on the go 24 hours a day. So head to inform.news/join right now to subscribe. What are you waiting for? Get three months of local news for just 99 cents a month at inform.news/join.
Welcome to Plain Talk. Happy to be with you. There's a lot, you know, we didn't, it was funny. If you listen to the podcast, the episode that we recorded right before this, which we actually normally we would record it on Wednesday, but I had technical, I was just complaining about Apple products. And then now I have to admit that I couldn't record Wednesday's show because Windows decided to do an update and borked my sound drivers on my computer. And so I couldn't record anything for like four hours. Anyway, the episode right before this, you probably heard me like stammering at one point. That's because I was getting inundated with text messages about the state Supreme Court having, having handed down an opinion in a lawsuit over, well, the separation of powers. Although the court ended up didn't not ruling on the separation of powers. What happened is the legislature finally got hoisted on their petard. For a long time, what they've been doing is at the end of every session, you've probably heard people talk about it. They call it the Christmas tree bill or what have you, because everybody gets to, you know, hang an ornament on it or put a present under it or whatever. It's the Office of Management and Budget Bill. And so what they do is, is they would take, you know, sometimes it was like fixes to bills that were passed earlier in the session. Sometimes it's like funding, or maybe it's a controversial thing that they're sneaking into a bill, all sorts of reasons. But this bill would get passed and it's, it would always be super, it always super long. It always got lots of different stuff in it. The thing is, is the North Dakota Constitution, Article Four, Section 13, says that bills have to be limited to a single subject. And anytime the bill description is an entire page all by itself, that is, as the OMB budget was this year, that is not a single issue. So what happened is the Office of Management, or excuse me, the, the North Dakota PERS Board, they're an organization, they oversee the public employees retirement system and healthcare and some other pensions. They, we had a big debate about reforming North Dakota's pensions. And so what happened is the legislature ultimately passed reform. And we're going to be moving from a defined benefit pension to a defined contribution pension. And there's a whole debate to be had about that. We've had that debate. But there's some people on at PERS that don't like the change. And they also don't like the fact that the legislature put some, some additional lawmakers on the PERS Board. They said it violates the separation of powers. You have legislative branch members on an executive branch board. They didn't like it so much. So they filed suit. They brought up the separation of powers issue and the single, single subject issue. The court ruled on the single subject issue and then didn't get to the separation of powers issue, saying at that point, it's moot. The bill's already unconstitutional. The upshot is, we're going to have a special session. And at that special session, they're going to have to take apart that OMB bill and pass all the different parts of it individually. Our guest, Representative Corey Mock, could certainly talk, I'm sure, confirm I'm right about that, right? That's what's going to have to happen, right, Corey?
Yeah, almost certainly. Yeah, yeah. And that's absolutely going to have to happen.
And, you know, there's also another question here, because one of the things that we found out shortly after the court ruled is our reporter, Patrick Springer at the forum, reported that Governor Burgum had asked the Chair of PERS, who he appointed in 2020, asked her, had asked her to step down and she refused. So there's a lot going on with this issue. And of course, my co-host Chad Oban joining as well. And, I mean, Corey, first of all, what a mess. Although I will tell you, when I've been calling around to a lot of your colleagues, I've actually been surprised by the number who expressed relief that the OMB thing is done with. I think there were a lot of people who were tired with that. And a common thing I heard is that they were tired of, because what happens with the OMB budget is like big changes happening. You and I talked about some of this at the end of the last session. Big changes start happening and there's very, very few people in the room. It's like usually the majority leaders and, and the appropriations chairs, and you have that small group of people and everybody else is just kind of sitting around watching. I'm hearing a lot of people saying that they're, they're kind of glad that that's over. Do you agree?
Well, I mean, it's, it was good that we were held accountable for trying to put in a bunch of amendments, policy changes, substantial substantive changes for appropriations and policy, some things that maybe had been briefly discussed, were discussed or offered and rejected, or just held out until the last day because, you know, you know that that, that bill is going to be coming before a leadership-based conference committee that you can just stick it, the idea in your back pocket and bring it forward on the last day and have one of the conferees introduce it for you. That, that process has, it's expanded. It wasn't, this wasn't always, since I've been there, it wasn't always this gigantic swing in every major policy reform you can. There's always been some adjustments, some tweaks, you know, and you could argue, we could, we could have the discussion of whether or not any of that should have occurred. But this was, this session, the, the conference committee pushed it too far, way too far. Coincidentally, I was talking with my six-year-old child yesterday morning before any of this happened and explaining to him the saying, why we can't have nice things. This is fittingly an example of how the legislature has, has dialed it up a bit. We've, we've pushed our, our limits, the constitutional allowance, and we were called. And I would say it's probably a good thing for us to be held accountable to this. Several of us were warning and saying, this wasn't introduced. This is, this was, you know, to have an up or down vote on a major policy decision after midnight, when everybody is dreaming about sleeping in their own bed? You really don't save room for, for debate. And yeah, we, it was, it was an injustice to the process. I'm disappointed that we got there. I, I don't like that we have to go back and do it and have to come back and have a special session. But I'm hoping it, we, we enjoy our slice of humble pie and we, we find ourselves back where, where we need to be.
I agree that it's gotten more egregious. Before Chad, I actually got an email from John Dorsso, who used to be the Majority Leader of, of the House. And he was talking about how it was happening back when he was Majority Leader. Although I think his argument as well is that wasn't at the same scale as it was. They got, they got carried away and the court rightly struck them down. Sorry, Chad.
So, you know, I think one of the things that's interesting here is the, the issue that ultimately brought this to court was adding four legislators to the PERS Board. A concept that did not get voted down just once in the state senate, it was voted down twice before it was snuck into this bill at one o'clock in the morning in the senate. And I think Doug Larson was on the floor of the senate, you know, in the middle of the night, a conservative, and basically said, this process stinks. He talked about two policy issues that came through his committee that were snuck in or changed. And then he said, I voted against this change to the PERS Board, or I voted for it twice. And he said, I can't vote for this anymore. The, the body has spoken. Corey, I'm glad you talked about the fact that this has expanded. You know, we talked about this has always been the case, but it's always been the case plus on steroids, the last few sessions. And another thing that changed last session is the Democratic leaders were no longer included in the OMB Conference Committee. I think that's the first time ever. I mean, when you were leader, you were on that conference committee, correct?
I was, yes.
And so what does this mean in terms of the end of the session? I don't know how many times you hear, we screwed that up, that bill has been signed, so we're going to fix in the OMB budget. Does this mean hundreds of delayed bills at the end of the session? I mean, we've got the short term, which is sort of interesting, but the long-term changes here are fascinating.
Without a doubt. I mean, there's a, and there's several long-term changes that I'll, I've been nerding out over this because of all of the implications and all of the other factors that we need to, that we're not even considering yet. We're in the era of term limits. When I look back at these conferees, not a single member of, of the conference committee that, that did this has ever been on this conference committee before. It was all new legislative leadership, majority leaders, both new, both brand-new chairs, and because there was, for the first time, to our knowledge ever, the minority leaders were not invited or allowed to participate in this. We had assistant leaders or, you know, another member of the, the Senate Appropriations Committee served as that third voice. It's a little, maybe a little foreshadowing to what we may see, not necessarily this issue, but that the, the effects of losing that institutional knowledge. Now, there was, and it's, it's hard to make that connection. It's a bit of a stretch, but it was that realization that I just recently had that, yeah, the conference committee, no one has been on this committee. It's a unique committee. It was a leadership committee, all new leadership. I wonder if we're going to start to see more of this as we go forward with, with more frequent turnover. But, you know, going back to your, your larger point, Chad, it was disappointing when we, when the minority leaders were not invited. It's a two-vote requirement is what you need to put something on from both chambers. So the minority leader could always be the vote of opposition on an amendment and, and the majority doesn't have to worry. They prevail. Many times, the minority leader and majority leader worked together on this, on these amendments, and it gave an opportunity for, for dialogue. The disappointing part is there was no opposition or, or obvious disagreement between the leaders. Both Representative Beauchesne, the minority leader, and Senator Hogan in the senate worked seemingly well with their counterparts. It just didn't make sense. I don't know why they needed one more vote on the committee from each side to get what they wanted. I don't know what, what they were afraid of. And I'm hoping that this is a sign that maybe, maybe a little pushback or someone there that can, can question our motives and what we're doing and the need before we, we just pack our committees with, with yes men.
Well, I think, I think one upshot of this is that it's going to make the process more arduous, because you're not going to have that catch-all bill at the end to, to just dump everything in that you need to fix, or you need to get in last minute, or, or that you're trying to sneak through because it got defeated before. Whatever it is you're, you're up to, you're not going to be able to do it. It's going to make the process harder. And I'm not so sure that's, that's not a good thing. What I'm hoping, and maybe this is, maybe this is me being too optimistic, but what I'm hoping is that it will get some people to focus and maybe we will get fewer bills, fewer repeat bills. And, and because you have to understand, the process is going to be harder now. Do you think that's going to happen?
I think part of that will be the result of this opinion. Part of that is also leadership, assuming we have some continuity for a couple of years, that they start to become, they become comfortable in their role. In, in years past, sessions past, leaders would, would look their members in the eye and say, you don't need 12 abortion bills or, or six bills on this one. You know, you get together, have one, one idea. We're not going to just sit and throw every variation in the hopper and have a half a dozen different ways of, you know, you know, creating media clickbait, with all due respect. That, that's, I'm hoping that our leaders are, we had a lot of that this session. I hope that they're more comfortable to say, temper it, you know, let's have one bill or just do this. You don't need, not everybody needs to have this. Get control of, of the, the topics at the beginning of the session. So I'm hoping that's part of it. This is, this is going to, you're right, slow it down. We're going to have to be extra cautious in how we fix errors from previous legislation, stuff that's already passed, probably signed into a law. How do, where do we make those adjustments in an existing bill that doesn't require us to go through a delayed bill, zip it between two chambers, and, and still try to meet our deadlines?
Errors. I mean, sometimes you're talking about a bill that, like this bill passed, and then another bill passed, and maybe it wasn't expected to, and now there's circumstances. So the, you know, the pill that already passed has to be amended in some ways. I mean, so we're not, we're not necessarily talking about errors were made. Sometimes it's just, it's the process. So many things are in flux. You have to go back and make adjustments. And that's just the way it is. I'm, I'm really, what's really interesting though about this is that the court handed down and struck down the OMB bill at the behest of the PERS Board for things, something that really wasn't central to the PERS Board's argument, right? I mean, they kind of threw in, and I mean, they got the outcome they wanted for now. But the thing was, is I don't, I don't think that they were out to, to challenge the single issue thing so much as they didn't want the lawmakers on the board. The court didn't, didn't say anything about that, although Chief Justice John Jensen, in a concurring opinion with the majority, you know, wrote that he didn't think, well, at least in his personal opinion, he didn't think the PERS Board was going to be successful on the separation of powers question. And I wonder if they will be too, because we, we, we have a lot of lawmakers on a lot of boards in the executive branch. I don't, I don't know. I'll leave that one to the lawyers. But, you know, underlying all of this is this ongoing fight over pensions, you know, which is looking, getting to look, it's going to be pretty tough. And I'm wondering what this legislature is going to do when they come back in for a special session in terms of, you know, the constitution of that board, maybe even giving Governor Burgum the authority to, to remove members in addition to appointing them. I mean, where, where's the legislature going to go with that?
Well, that's a good question. And I don't think it's unique to just this one board. As I think you pointed out in a recent column, the governor can appoint, but the, the process for removing a member is, is not as clear cut. We see that on, on appointed boards, but there's also boards that are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the senate, where there is no clear removal process. There's, if there's a, there can't really be a motion to, to remove. It's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think some of those require acts of impeachment in order to remove somebody unless they resign on their own, on their own volition. So it's a larger conversation that, that will likely emerge. I don't think it's going to happen as soon as this special session, because there are so many other impacts. I could be wrong. We may try to put something in that there's an allowance for the governor to remove a position, a member who he has appointed, he or she, but yeah. But, but it is a larger problem that, that we will have to face. I don't know if we'll see the change go through. The senate was pretty strong in their opposition to this change. If it's an up or down vote on what we've already defeated twice, I don't know that I, I see us revisiting that issue at great length.
So Corey, I think, you know, going back to the, I'm going to make a comment, then I'm going to go onto a question. But, but the idea of the governor's office calling this board member and telling, asking her to resign, I mean, I do worry that we're setting up a system where anybody who disagrees are said, you know, leave. I understand the governor can appoint who he wants these positions. That doesn't mean that you have to agree with everything the governor does. And if we're getting to the point where we're just going to kick people off of boards if they don't agree with everything, I think that's a bad sign.
I don't agree with that at all. If the governor can hire somebody, he should be able to fire him. I mean, come on.
It's a point to a government board. It's not, it's not his PERS Board. It's the members of the PERS.
Right, but he's the governor. It's part of the executive branch. And it's ironic that the PERS Board is making an executive branch argument, saying, we're part of the alleged, the executive branch legislature, you can't do this, while simultaneously giving the middle finger to the governor, who's the head of the executive branch.
So what you're saying is that every board member that's appointed by the governor has to agree and be lockstep with what the governor says. And so we can't have any thoughtful conversations without the concern that you're going to get thrown, nope, Rob. I mean, where, where does it stop? I mean, all, all this, this board member is saying is she doesn't want to fire Scott Miller, who's not an appointee.
Well, okay, first of all, first of all, first of all, Mike Nowatzki confirmed to me, they did not ask the PERS Board. And in fact, because that was in Pat Springer's article, and he's removed that part from his article. Nowatzki said they did not ask, now, I think they should fire Scott Miller immediately for his comments about, about what the legislature did. And first of all, it's not up to this board. This board is not a fourth branch of government under themselves. They are a part of the executive branch. The head of the executive branch is the governor. And if he doesn't want, if he doesn't think somebody's doing a good job on the board, right? When the governor's elected, he has, he has, he has the right to advance his agenda. He was elected.
We'll go, we'll take, we'll take a loyalty pledge that we have to agree with him 100% of the time.
It's not a loyalty pledge.
God forbid there be other positions, Rob. That's not my point. I want to talk to Corey about the special session.
No, because I want to address that point. If we were talking about, if we had a defined contribution pension, and we were trying to move to a defined benefit pension, and a Democratic majority got it through, and they got it over, and, and some people on the PERS Board were giving a middle finger to Governor Heidi Heitkamp, saying, no, we're going to do what we want. You would be singing a different tune, my friend.
You're wrong. This board has made it perfectly clear that they are going to implement the DC.
I don't believe them.
They are going to implement it. There's no other choice. It's in law that they're going to do this.
Okay, great.
Okay, so they're going to do this.
I don't believe them.
What they're, what they don't like is that they were, the PERS Board was giving honest numbers about the cost of this thing. That's what the governor didn't like. That's what the legislature didn't like.
What the governor didn't like is Scott Miller going to the Bismarck Tribune. And I, well, I shouldn't say that. I don't know what the governor's like. If I was the governor, I could tell you I wouldn't like Scott Miller going to the Bismarck Tribune, saying that this is the worst mistake the legislature has ever made. If you're the legislature, do you have confidence in that guy following through faithfully in the laws that he's been given?
That they will not implement what the legislature passed.
Baloney. Except, except for, except for the words he's actually spoken out of his mouth.
There is nothing that he has done or said since the bill was passed to indicate that he will not implement the law. I mean, if he's not implementing the law, then absolutely he should be fired.
Why is he, why, 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 then why say that? If it's the worst mistake, then why is he still on the job? If he's going to sit there and implement the worst mistake in the history of the state? Those are his words.
It's, it's the law now. He can disagree with it. Okay, I want to get off the PERS Board. Rob, you're getting too worked up. It's not, it's not healthy for you. Corey, I want to talk about this special session. We saw during the redistricting committee, or redistricting special committee, that there was a way to sort of filter out new ideas. And the majority leaders let some through. We ended up talking about COVID and all kinds of stuff like that. You know, just implementing this OMB budget is going to be 40, 45 bills. I mean, there's 68 sections of this thing. Are you confident they're going to be able to keep other things out of this? I mean, Rob brought up one to try to hurt the PERS Board again, you know, as an option that people might bring in.
Personally, but.
I mean, I would also say, if we're going to talk about things that are really affecting North Dakotans, matter, rather than playing these sort of games inside the weed or about the port, maybe do something about property taxes. If you're going to get out of the OMB budget and do other things, maybe do something about property taxes. But do you think that they're going to be able to stay focused on OMB? Or do you think it's going to be a free-for-all during this special session?
I, I think, by the way, I feel like I owe you guys admission to watch what was probably the greatest political show this week. That was fantastic. Not everybody gets to see this, you get to hear it. This was fantastic for me. So I, I will.
The second I sat, did you see how hard Rob's, like when I started this, how hard his eye roll, like, I'm surprised his eyes are still in his head.
It hurt a little bit. I'll, I'll admit.
Yeah, this is, this is, I, this is the one moment where I feel horrible for the audience because they only got the audio version. They're really missing out on the gem of the.
We're kind of, we're working, we're working towards a video version. That's been happening. We're working on it. We're innovators here at Plain Talk.
So that's, that aside, and thank you again. This is, you guys are really making my week. I have, I don't believe for a moment that this will be limited to just the 60-some sections that were in OMB. Not, we had our 2021, the, the redistricting special session in November. That was not limited to just redistricting. We, we knew that there was going to be some, some appropriations work. There's, as Chad, I think you said, the COVID relief money, some appropriations. We ended up having several bills that came through. The way this will work, and it'll be up to the, the two delayed bills committee, but any member can draft a bill, they can bring it forward for introduction. If it's approved by three or more of the five members of the delayed bills committee, in the House, it's our leadership. So Speaker, Majority and Minority Leaders and their assistants, if it gets approved, it goes in to, it gets filed, it gets read, and it gets sent to a committee. When we met in, you know, two years ago, we created, we had our appropriations committees that were already there, but we also created a joint redistricting committee and a joint technical corrections committee. And those bills were filed to those two committees. And then we worked through the process. I'm guessing that whether it's 60 bills to take what was in OMB or, or 20 bills, or you try to condense some of them, you'll have those, they'll go, I'm guessing to whatever the appropriate committee. I would not be surprised if we see a few other important, you know, quotes or otherwise, important ideas come forward, and there will be likely a few that will get filed and sent to a committee for a vote. So I don't know what they'll be, but I would be surprised if it's just the issues that were in OMB and nothing else.
So how long is this going to last? It's a lot of bills.
It's a lot of bills, but a lot of the ideas, most of them were discussed this session. I think there's not a lot of, of new controversy that exists. I'm guessing if, if we're disciplined, we could be done in a week. We did it in, you know, two years ago, we were in and out in a week. We're going to be.
That if, that if, the if in that sentence is doing, the if in that sentence is doing a lot of work. So real quick, we, we don't have a lot of time left with you. How, what's the timeline you think you guys are going to end up back in Bismarck? And number two, what's it like for introducing bills? Like if somebody comes, everything has to go through the delayed bills committee? Am I understanding that right? So, so it's not, that's a tougher, I mean, so people can't just introduce bills like they do for a regular session? There's a tougher hurdle. So it is going to be harder. Do you think there's going to be discipline there so that we're not, we're not just doing a whole second regular session?
There will be. Yeah. I mean, I imagine there will be bills that are brought forward that get sent to delayed bills and they say, not this time, come back in 2025, we'll talk about it then. It's not important. There'll probably be a few things that have emerged since we were last in town in April. They'll say, yep, let's put that in. That's a good idea. Let's get that fixed. Or there was something we may have even missed. Yep, this is the time to do it. The, the week, can we, can we be disciplined? Yeah, I think we will. The timeline, if, without a stay, and as of, as of this recording, we're still within a three-week grace period. If I'm not mistaken, it was 21 days was the stay. I know three of the five justices recommended a 30-day stay. But because I, if I'm not mistaken, the standard, the default is 21, and it requires four of the five to, to, to make a, a ruling or a change. I don't, I think it's 21. There'll be a motion, if it hasn't already been filed, to extend that. I'm guessing we would be best suited if we could have a few weeks to prepare, get people a chance to, to get rooms, to, to clear their calendar. And I would be looking at the ideal scenario early to mid-November. I think that gives people enough time to make some work adjustments, to get back, to get the, the procedure prepared, get staff in place. So we're not stuck working on a skeletal crew and having a bunch of absences of legislators. So I'm hoping the Supreme Court, if, if there is a motion, that that's a consideration they're making. Because if the, the cost of doing nothing and going past that, of this, of this ruling going into effect is huge. It's, I don't know that we could fully calculate the potential consequences of us not addressing the, 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 the things that are now ruled unconstitutional.
This is certainly not the first bill where policy has been made in an omnibus bill in the state of North Dakota. So all those, I mean, they struck down one bill, this 25, Senate Bill 2015 from, from the last session. That's not to say that, that we couldn't see more lawsuits challenging more bills down the road. We don't know what's going to happen. All right. We got to put a pin in it there. Corey, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Corey.
Thanks, guys.
And Chad and I, Chad and I were happy to entertain you this afternoon.
Yeah. At this rate, anytime, guys, you call anytime.
We burnt out most of Corey's time through our little argument.
Yeah, that's right. All right. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're gonna talk about polling next.
Hi, everybody. I'm Chad Cool, host of the Northland Outdoors Podcast. Hey, here in the Northland, we love our time outside. And on the Northland Outdoors Podcast, we're going to talk about all of it. Not just fishing, not just hunting, but mountain biking, camping, rock climbing, bird watching, you name it. We're going to have it on the Northland Outdoors Podcast. New episodes every two weeks on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, wherever you get your podcasts. So look for it and join us on the Northland Outdoors Podcast.
All right, welcome. After a riveting conversation of, about legislative procedure and public pensions, we're going to move on to even more scintillating content. We're going to talk about public polling here in North Dakota. You know, one of the things is, is somebody who, I mean, obviously follows politics and writes about it, one of the things that, that is really hard is it's hard to, to measure when a candidate or an issue might be getting traffic or, or traction, I guess I should say. And I mean, there's certain things you could tap into the zeitgeist. You could kind of see, you know, what's the social media? And I mean, there's certain things you could tap into the zeitgeist. You could kind of see, you know, what's the social media action on it? You know, for me, a lot of times, how many people are emailing me about it? How many phone calls or texts or whatever am I getting about an issue or a candidate? Um, but the one thing that we don't get a lot of in North Dakota is, is polling. And so we, we're going to get more polling, is what it sounds like. The North Dakota News Cooperative, uh, is announcing that they're, they, they have announced that they are developing a new public opinion research service. And what they want to do is they want to measure current attitudes, opinions on a variety of public policy and consumer issues in North Dakota. They're calling it the North Dakota Poll. Um, and here to talk with me about this is, uh, uh, Brian Lundey. Brian, how you doing?
Wonderful. Rob, thank you for having me again.
Um, first of all, tell us, what is the North Dakota News Cooperative? I'm assuming, I know what it is, but I'm assuming a lot of people haven't really heard of this organization. What is it?
The North Dakota News Cooperative is an independent, nonpartisan group of very serious, current and former journalists. You may know Michael Standard. They've brought him in. He was with Bloomberg for fifteen years in China. He's done lots of, uh, coverage for Washington Post, lots of national publications, but he's their senior journalist. But this is made up of, you know, a lot of the former, in serious newspaper journalists, um, going back forty years, who have come together to form this independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. In a sense, the, the cooperative is an extension of every newsroom in the state because they provide very serious content and give it away. Uh, you've probably seen a lot of Michael's work. His byline, some people skip over the byline, but it might be the cooperative providing the content. So as an organization seriously committed to journalistic standards going way back, they've been, they understand the importance of bringing public opinion into media coverage and into public, uh, policymaking. And that, you know, over time, it's become easy everywhere to skip over the public and, and go straight to our social media platforms, you know, get in our bubbles, tribes, whatever you want to call it, get in our argument loops and stay there. And we kind of skip over what the public thinks. And they, as journalists, they come and say, wait a minute, we need to start with the public and work back to us. I don't care if you're a policymaker or a, a media organization. So it's been a growing void, not just in North Dakota, but everywhere. And they're front, they're kind of stopping and saying, hey, that's the one, that's one con, you know, serious content we can inject back into the system. But then it becomes a question of doing it right. You know, let's do statistically reliable, uh, public opinion research that will stand up to any pollster in the country. If we're going to touch this, we're going to do it right. So, um, I've worked with, uh, Chris Wilson. He is the founder of WPA Intelligence. We've worked together since nineteen ninety-six. And I found their organization to be the most reliable, you know, scientifically reliable, uh, polling organization I've worked with. So you always need that, you know, scientifically random selected sample. You need the, um, obviously, the, uh, the callers, the data analysis. You know, I work mainly on questionnaire and analysis, but you need that back room. And WPA brings that to us. And it's just, uh, again, you know, how long ago is that? Uh, nineteen ninety-six. So, and they polled out here uh, on both issues and candidate work. So they have experience in North Dakota and just happen to have a history with them. So anyway, we've teamed up to provide this service with the cooperative. Um, and hopefully, you know, it'll be, uh, we're, we're hoping to go out about a year out from the election day with our inaugural poll. Because, you know, this is another thing where, well, a year from now, we know the voters are going to face a couple of things. Maybe we should check in with them now. Uh, amending our, how we're going to amend our, if we're going to amend our constitution a different way. Um, probably the property tax issue. But what we wanted to do is open it up to other media organizations, trade associations, businesses, even government. I've had a conversation about what is the market for EVs in North Dakota? Well, we probably should ask this customer. Are they considering purchasing or leasing a, in their next purchase, a, a truck, uh, an electric truck or car? You know, we don't really know if, what the market is. So that the dealers here can tell the mothership uh, what, what North Dakotans think about it.
Ryan, you have a, yeah. You, you have an absolutely fascinating background. Um, you were the, was it the youngest executive director of the DNC, uh, in the, in the history or something like that?
I was, yeah, in the mid-eighties.
You co-chaired Democrats for Bush. You've done a lot of really, you know, incredible things on both sides of the aisle. A North Dakota native, um, went away and, and now you're back in North Dakota again. I mean, I don't think you ever truly a hundred percent left, but you know, you're back full-time. Why was coming north, back to North Dakota and why is this project so important to you? I mean, as, as somebody who's gone off and done great things, why, why is it so important to come back here and, and help on this kind of thing?
Probably because of this void that I've seen develop. I've seen it all over the country where especially as you trend to one-party states, this tendency to skip over the voter and it kind of leads to sometimes a disdain, a contempt. Even, I don't need to listen to the voter. I'm going to be elected anyway. I don't think we're talking about California, New York, or North Dakota. But I have seen other states where Iowa poll, the New Hampshire poll, Texas poll, Florida poll. There are serious news organizations checking in with the public and, and injecting that opinion into the system. And you know, for some, somewhere along the line, we've kind of lost it. Polling is the way we listen to the public between elections. We will, we'll hear them on election day. But if you don't really keep them in the system, they, they get taken for granted and then they, they, they feel their opinion doesn't count. And then we start getting into this anger, which leads to argument loops that you never get out of. And that's not where the voter is. The voter doesn't want to be in the, this current argument loop. And then on top of that, I've seen the national coverage so overwhelm local coverage that we are becoming, we don't, we know more about, um, a senator from Georgia than we do our city councilman down the street. And we better start saying what the person closest to the elected official is thinking. So a lot of it's just, um, I have the fort, good fortune now of being able to come and give something back and but this, this is a vacuum I've always wanted to fill, but then, but I, I know there are people out here that want to fill it, have wanted to fill it longer than I have. We're just, there's a happy marriage here that maybe we'll have the ability to do it. We know with professional statisticians and others that we can, we can help the, make the system better.
I, I want to, I want to share an anecdote. And by the way, one of the reasons why we know more about the senator from Georgia is, is sometimes it's what the public wants. They find local news boring. They like the, the spicy stuff nationally and if the, if, if the, the Congresswoman from Georgia, uh, for instance, Marjorie Taylor Greene is, is doing wild stuff. That's always making headlines. It seems like that's what they're, they're interested in, even though she's not their congressman or Congresswoman. Um, I, the, one thing, and I'm going to share an anecdote here. Uh, years ago, um, the company that I now work for, uh, that I did not work for at the time, um, was doing some, they, they were doing some public polling and it was a lead up to the race. And I think it might've been, I think it might've been, uh, two thousand twelve, um, Berg High Camp. I think that's right. And they had, they had commissioned some polling from the University of North Dakota. And, you know, they talked about it. They were kind of dribbling it out, dribs and drabs. And I was, I was wild because again, we never have a lot of public polling in North Dakota. I was absolutely wild to get my hands on these results because I was curious. Like I wanted to know, what does it say? So I, I got a bright idea in my head and I filed an open records request with the University of North Dakota, which is a public institution, asking for the polling data. And guess, guess who forgot to do the contract in the right way to exempt the results from the open records requests? Rob Port had the whole polling file, uh, like weeks before the forum was going to report everything. Uh, and I actually, I actually got calls from some people I work with now saying, please, please don't, please don't publish that. Um, which, which I, which I didn't, um, which I didn't. I was a nice guy, but I had the whole thing and I, I didn't pay a dime for it. I could have just dropped it all on, on the internet and said, there you go. Uh, but I didn't. They paid for it. I didn't want to be a jerk, but I got to see it all, which was kind of cool. Um, but I, I guess that gets to my point is there's so little of it. How often are you guys, because, because I, what I think polling is really valuable. A one-off poll, I think is interesting, but I think it's really hard to hang your hat on it as data. Well, I think what you need is, is consistent methodology over time. Um, so that you could track trends and you could see is a candidate going up or the candidate going down? Is this issue going up? Is this issue going down? Stuff like what Gallup does, stuff like what Pew does. I find that sort of stuff to be very, very useful. Or when you take like when, uh, like the polling aggregators in the presidential race and they take a bunch of different polls. You know, and they're, they're showing you, even though a lot of times maybe it's sometimes different methodologies or different samples. You know, in the aggregate, it becomes very meaningful. And so I guess that's my question to you is, how are you guys going to roll these polls out? Are you doing like a monthly poll? How, how's it going to work? Do you know yet?
Well, you're right on the money. Um, our goal is to do these quarterly. Um, you know, again, this is a nonprofit organization. So, and why it's structured as an omnibus poll so that others can participate. You know, twenty-five hundred dollars for a trade association, let's say, candidate, whoever. They can join in this poll. There's no reason to pay for those seven, eight demographic questions. All those groups can pay for them once in a poll like this. So, but I, to answer your question, I think quarterly is our, is our goal. We do have to sell some questions to other news organizations or trade associations that want data to break even. Uh, which is, which is the goal. Um, you know, it's, it's not to, this is not, it, it's a nonprofit. It doesn't need to make money. So we would, would like to break even, but we do have to have other participants. Um, if we want to do it quarterly. Now, I would think even get like the Iowa poll quarterly, but, but to your point, that's the best way to go if you can establish trends, where people start, how they move, what's moving them. Um, we're going to try to stay away. I, you know, we'll always get into horse race. You have to towards an election. But issue polling has such good shelf life that we'd like to stay pretty much on issues and, you know, that we don't get into that titillation of chasing a horse race.
Um, oh, man. Oh, man.
There'll be plenty of that, right? Um, but I think you remember, Rob, when the Jamestown Stutsman County Development Corporation did a uh, survey, not, they had never surveyed what the public wanted from the legacy fund. So it had been out there about eleven, twelve years and they finally asked the public. And I was shocked because you had, I thought it'd be like sixty, forty, you know, how they want it used, keep the current system and so forth. Ten to one margins. They want the legacy fund to be invested within the state. Eight to one margins. They wanted North Dakota financial professionals to manage it. So when we brought that to the legislature, when Mike Nathie was leading that charge for fourteen twenty-five, let's start at least putting ten percent in our own state. When we brought that data in, it shocked a lot of legislators how out of step they were with the constituents. Because we were flying blind and no, and the State Investment Board never stopped to say, what does the public want from their sovereign wealth fund? We get to do whatever we want with it. It has no obligations like a pension fund. And so anyway, we brought the data in and we just ran up the score on fourteen twenty-five. Um, you know, so that's, that's an example of you're into issue polling. It's, I bet that data is as reliable today as it was two years ago.
Are you, are you going to do any? I mean, I, I, first of all, I think the issue polling is great. Are you, are you, is candidate polling going to be in there at all? Or, or is that just something you're going to say?
Yeah, you'll, yeah, you will have to. But I think a lot of it, you know, you start in that arena with job performance ratings, favorable ratings. You know, start with stuff that is really substantive to the voter, what they think about job performance until you, until you jump ahead to, hey, you know, Jane against Joe. Well, okay, but what's underlying all that?
So Brian, one of the, so I, I'm involved at North Dakota United with a lot of polling. We use a pollster, uh, Dean Mitchell, DFM Research out of the cities. I think Rob's used him in the past. And it's, it's very cost effective and he, and I think he knows North Dakota, uh, very well. We've used some of that issue-based polling in the past to bring to the legislature and say, you know, this is how people feel about public schools, et cetera. And one of the things we've ran into is legislators not trusting polling, right? I mean, it's a, the sample of four hundred or six hundred, eight hundred, I didn't get called, so therefore the data is not real, right? Um, one of the things that's appealing to this about me is it's sort of like this third-party validator. So it's not me paying for a poll that says what I want it to say, um, but it would be somebody else who's sort of a third-party validator. Um, my question is, you know, I'm going to go into like nerd out a little bit about polling. You know, my concern would be if North Dakota United buys a section of it, the Rural Electrics buy a, a section of it and somebody else. The, how do you make it flow? How do you make the poll flow in a way that you're not jumping from one issue area to another issue area that it makes sort of sense?
Actually, omnibus polls, the vote, the voter, the slash voter consumer, they love it because sometimes you lose them. When you take one subject and try to go deep, you can't finish the survey with them. They like to move around. That's the thing about, about us as people. We like our opinions to be heard on all kinds of things, but nobody ever asks. They, what, you know, maybe instinctively you think jumping around is bad. Jumping around is good.
It keeps people interested.
They want to jump around. The other thing that's really saved the industry is texting. You know, I, I'll get a call, somebody wants to poll. Well, I'm in the middle of something, but I want to, I want to take the poll. Texting allows you to, when I hang up, I click on the link and go to the questionnaire. Plus you're getting a little more in-depth thought with people who can stop and think and fill out the questionnaire on their own time, as long as they do it in our two to three day window of capturing the five hundred, you know, random sample. But I, I think, I hope that answers your question that, no, they like jumping around. Now, now ask me about this. Now ask me about that. But, you know, and that's part of the questionnaire design to keep it flowing so that there are, you're connecting maybe public policy stuff and then you move to consumer stuff. Instead of jumbling all that. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, this, this data is really, um, because a lot of times I like to look at, um, I mean, attitudes change. Like we make assumptions about North Dakota, obviously, and, and that it's, you know, very socially conservative. We don't a lot of times make room. And a lot of times it's because the, the, the change is so glacial. Sometimes it's hard to perceive. But sometimes it like, it changes kind of under our feet. And, and it's an assumption that we made about the electorate is maybe not true anymore. Or, or is less true than it was in the past, as, as the case may be. And so I, again, I really find data from like Pew and Gallup very interesting. And it's easy to find that kind of data for California or New York or even like Minnesota. Um, finding it for North Dakota is almost impossible. So I am excited for this. Um, I mean, obviously your first poll results come out. I am excited for eventually for it to turn into an archive of data that we can go back and track something like abortion or same-sex marriage or marijuana. I mean, even some of those like hot button issues over time. I, and I don't know if you're going to pull those issues, but whatever it is, to have a treasure trove of data that we could go back and we could say, this is the trend line over the last fifteen years for this issue. Hopefully I'm still going to be working in fifteen years. I don't know.
But I was going to say, could you head our polling department? Because that's exactly what you, we need to do. And like you said, you get that history at Pew. You know, you go back and still, you know, national, basically. It's not your state, but it start comparing our state to the national Pew stuff. That's another, you know, I, I think that our data is going to go national. Because you, you see national coverage of all these other state polls just by getting in the business. And finally, we'll be heard beyond North Dakota too, when we start having, you know, reliable data into the system. You know, one thing, Rob, you've been writing about this, but, um, we, for instance, on a trend, we don't know if we're headed for a protest vote on property taxes. Or are we going to, or are we going to revert to the previous decision where it was kind of a, who gets to decide, state or local?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, so I'm, yeah. You don't know how, how much I wish I had some data because I'm out here trying. Now, I, I don't want that measure to pass. I think it might though, because I'm, first of all, I'm listening to, to voters. I know that in two thousand twelve, um, you know, people, people, they were, you know, some promises were made that we were going to address this issue. We're more than a decade later. I don't know that people feel like it's been addressed. I don't know how much they're going to trust if another, uh, if another proposal comes out. And I don't even know what that proposal is. What else can the legislature do at this point with all the money that we've dumped into it? Do we try to raise sales taxes? That's going to be tough because we've been raising sales taxes across the state too. So anyway, I, you don't know how, as I'm trying to like articulate, like, hey, local governments, you might want to think about what you're doing to property taxes right now, because if you provoke the voters, they may burn the house down. And it would be really nice to have polling data on this over the last eleven years since that last vote to say, have, have passions eased. I don't know that they. I don't know that they have.
So Rob, I'll just say that I think you're talking me out of liking this polling, um, concept because I know some people who do have that data and it's an advantage for us to have polling information on those. I'm not going to tell, but, uh, as you were talking about that, it's like, I don't want everybody to know the stuff that we've been paying for over the last six months or so.
What, what I, what I want to avoid is what the Iowa poll did. They went out there and they, and they got, you know, the emotional reaction that people hate the amount they're paying. Well, yeah, do I need to poll that? Or do I really need to poll what the final, you know, this concept of, again, Rob, you've been writing about, is this a pro protest vote coming or is it this, uh, choice about, you know, which, which level of government do you want deciding this for you? You know, we don't know, but to get away from that emotional reaction on, are you paying too much? Well, yeah, it's 90, 10.
Put me in the camp of 10, I get a hell of a deal for my property taxes, paying for my kids' education and emergency services. I, I know we're into the last few minutes, so I'm going to shift gears slightly. Uh, because Brian, like I said, when I was talking about your bio, uh, I find your background very intriguing. Uh, but one of the things that you're working on in North Dakota is Bison World. Am I correct about that? Why should I, as a guy sitting in Bismarck, care about Bison World? Why should I care about Bison World?
Pardon?
Why should I, as a guy sitting in Bismarck, care about Bison World? And why should we invest in it as a state?
Okay, very quickly, uh, every state does what they call place marketing. Here's our place on the earth and we got a bunch of good things and we all promote like crazy. Every state, and we do it as well as anybody in the country, promotion. But every state gets, hits a fork in the road. Okay, are we going to actually, this is a huge industry. You know, we always, we always say it's our number three industry. Well, where we can take that industry, people just don't understand where you can take the tourism industry. But you have to, there's a, you have to graduate, you ultimately face, are we going to develop state-driven destination attractions? That's what breaks you out. So for instance, uh, in Iowa right now, Governor Kim Reynolds, she said, you know, it's time to take our Field of Dreams theme that we had in the 1989 movie. And we, we've got that, we own that, we need to move it to a destination attraction. So, and she's just taking a playbook out of the other states of governors in Kentucky and in Alabama, where the governors grab these things and we're going to take it up. So it, for instance, Bison World reinvents this entire area of the state. You inject $17 million in a year into one destination development and 40 some million in multiplier effect. First of all, it starts solving lots of workforce issues. Tourism is your number one industry, uh, to get young, new workforce in. And there's an attract and hold concept. Tennessee and others have done this. They know if you can get, you know, that most of the people work in the service industry, four out of five in our country. They want to, they're going to want, they want to work in that industry. And if they come there, they get great customer service skills, communication skills, management skills. And when they move, they, you, you hold them in your area. So you can't say, uh, if you don't say tourism and workforce in the same breath, you're not serious about workforce. It's the number one industry to get workforce. But beyond that, it's, when you have a commodity-based economy, you, the next thing you inject into it, parallel to it is tourism. And I, I was in Kentucky with four governors in a row. When they face this kind of thing, well, we have the Derby and Bourbon. Yeah, those, you grab those things. Okay, let's own the horse in the mind of the tourist, let's own Bourbon. They, they go bond a hundred and some million dollars to build the Kentucky Horse Park. Now they own that part of the tourism niche. Alabama did this with pension money. Alabama, eight governors in a row, a guy named David Bronner from Austin, Minnesota goes down. He becomes the head of the retirement system of Alabama. And he says enough's enough. We've got image problems, workforce problems, business recruitment problems, quality of life problems. I'm done with that. And they took $233 million of pension money and built the Robert Trent Jones Golf Course. It wasn't about golf courses. This was about sending a signal to corporate America. We're going to have, we're going to take 11 communities from North Alabama to the Gulf of Mexico. We're going to develop 11 destinations in our state. Yeah, they're all going to have Robert Trent Jones Golf Courses. But he went way beyond that. Pension money built resorts, hotels, restaurants. They, you know, the state owns six spas, uh, retirement communities around each one of them, all a hundred percent public owned. The point being governors, governors just drive this train. They start, so like in Iowa, back to the field of dreams, saying first $50 million, 45 million in state grants. We have taken a great first step. You've got to start destination developments or otherwise you're just going to be in that great morass of pitching what you got.
Well, I think, I think.
Once it break out, really that industry takes off and becomes really a flagship industry.
Well, we have, I mean, we have it that, we have Midora, um, which is a prime example of, of what can be done. And I, I think the argument is it's Midora again, except a different sort of attraction in a different part of the state. And you replicate it, although I will say, you start talking about state-owned spas and golf courses and stuff. I started getting hives.
I know, I know. I know, well, you know, we're talking.
I am all about, I am all about, I like, I'm all about like, like some loans from the legacy fund to help get this stuff started. I am not for the state owning a, um, I am not for the state owning a golf course.
Example, because it doesn't get any more conservative politically than Alabama. I call them right-wing socialist. Because when it comes to business and economic development, they, you know, they did all this for a reason. They, if they wouldn't have done this.
Yeah.
Well, when they did it, in comes Mercedes, Toyota.
All right.
Hyundai, Aerobus.
I guess that, I guess that worked in Alabama. If you're pitching this in North Dakota, Brian, leave that part out. I think that's, that's my advice to you. Leave the government-owned golf courses out.
I overstated to make the case.
No, I, no, I understand the argument that you're making.
Get serious. I don't care how you get serious. But get serious because we've got a flagship being developed out west now. But most of the tourists are, are coming from the east. And Sarah Addy Coleman has for years said, we have got to get them off the highway. Well, what better place on state land, three blocks from the interstate exit with 8.8 million people going by?
I, I, um, I, I like the idea mostly be, I mean, I, I, I love North Dakota so much. I love living here. I love raising my kids here and it, it hurts my soul a little bit when people talk, talk mean about North Dakota, like it's this boring place and there's nothing to do here. There's nothing going on there. Um, so let's get some stuff going on. And first of all, there's, there is fun stuff going on here, but let's, let's get flashy about it. Let's do it. I, I don't know. I, I think that's why the whole state should care about something like this. Oh, I mean, it's worth having a debate over.
One other quick thing, we have so many great things to do, but it is in an area where you have to kind of create your own experience and your own, uh, entertainment. And in the United States of entertainment, all the surveys show these, these families with disposable income. What do they want? Structured entertainment, instant gratification that only destinations and theme parks kind of give you. So we have to kind of, you know, most of the money isn't going into state national parks. It's going into theme and amusement parks.
Yeah.
Are we going to capture that money or not?
And the, and the reality is going to Disneyland, going to Disney World, it's, it's out of reach for a lot of people. Um, going to something in Jamestown, that's very much in reach.
For 25 bucks versus like 225.
Right, all right. So we're going to, we're going to end there. Brian, thank you so much. Certainly appreciate your time.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Did you know Forum Communications Company has a robust podcast library at inform.com/podcast? We have everything from politics, sports, true crime, outdoor adventure and more. Visit inform.com/podcast and explore them all today.